Alright, what's up everybody, welcome back to Twisted Life TV, I am Porjri, you are here for another Travel and Talk Tuesday. And it's basically just a lot of updates on stuff that we've already reported on this week. Or stuff we've already put it on, nah, I don't want that. Or stuff we've already put it on in the last month, maybe. Okay, I guess I go with that ponytail look. Um, on my way to work. I should be there almost on time, almost on time. I'mma start off with, um, the RIP that I have. Um, the hip-hop community has lost another artist, artist by the name of Magoo. Um, Melvin Ratcliffe is his real name, passed away at age fifty. Um, Magoo is best known for his work on Up Jump The Boogie, in affiliation with Timbaland. Um, also being on Missy Elliott's, um, Beat Nine One One track. Those are the things that I most remember him by. Um, I'm quite sure he's done a lot more in the community, but as far as like releasing music, those are the three things that I remember him, or two things that I remember him on. I do remember him being in Timbaland's videos, and he was really close with Timbaland. Uh, like I said, he was age fifty. As of right now, there is no cause of death being released. However, there are reports out there speculating that he was a heart-related incident. Every time somebody their age, uh, passes away, you know, my first thought, it was drug-related, when it's a heart-related incident, but his loved ones are saying that, um, he had no other health conditions that they are aware of, other than his asthma. But for the past week, he had been not feeling well. Now y'all know how we do, it's black people, we don't go to the doctor when we get sick. One, because the doctor costs too much fucking money. Two, half of us probably didn't even got insurance. Um, but the, the main one is the doctor costs too much fucking money for them to just give us aspirin and some orange juice to tell us go home and rest. That's pretty much what, it seems to be like a recurring thing. Or we find out some shit that we didn't want to hear, like we dying. So, we kind of avoid going to the doctor. I am one of them people, plus like, yeah, let me keep my personal opinion about why I don't go to the doctor out, because y'all gonna turn me up, y'all always turn me up. Anywho, rest in peace to Magoo, y'all. Rest in peace to Mr. Magoo. Um, the majority of the news, all senses around Donald Trump, so I think I'mma get to him last. I was on Instagram the other day, and I saw on, uh, Kelly Creo's IG page, that she had posted a town hall, um, meeting, or city council meeting from Prairie View, Texas. And in this meeting, there was a lady named Dr. Candace Matthews, who came up with some handcuffs, she was jingling her handcuffs, like shake, 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 shake. You could actually see it on, um, DL Hughley's page right now too, because he retweeted it. Because of course they tagged him and a whole lot of other people. Um, where she is serving federal papers against the city council for a lot of felony violations that they have participated in. And the whole premise of the video was like, y'all going to jail. Y'all going to jail, get ready for the lawsuits, they coming down. She had a prosecutor or a processor in the meeting, served different individuals with the papers, but there was a lot more papers in her hand that did not get served. So, a lot of these people that they are serving didn't show up to the council meeting. Baby, I'm finna follow this story, because I gotta figure out what's really going on down in Prairie View, Texas, and give y'all a good detailed, uh, explanation of what's happening. Because in addition to her, there was another, um, citizen of the community who did a whole, I'mma say a theatric show. And she did her theatric show too, when she came up with her little, uh, handcuffs, and she was jangling, like, you hear these, you hear these, you hear these, you know, it was, it was, it was good, it was priceless, right? Where he decided that he was gonna, um, strip down out of his suit into an orange jumpsuit to let these people know, these city council members know, you going to jail. Well, his case was that somebody been stealing money. The city council has a budget or income or a petty cash, I don't know what they call it, a pot of two point four million dollars, and apparently one million of that has been stolen. There was one council member by the last name of Allen, who they specifically singled out, a lot of his transactions. And, uh, he told him, look here, it's a lot of money missing. Y'all going to jail. I like you, you cool and all, but we, y'all going to jail. I'm just letting y'all know that right now. So, I'm not sure if both of these stories are related. It did happen at the same city council meeting, and basically the city council members, the ones who were seated on the board, are the ones that they are speaking directly to, in addition to some other members that didn't show up. So, I'mma follow that, because it looked intriguing to me. I posted a small clip, uh, of it up on my Twitter page, so if you go over to MyTwistedLifeLYF on Twitter, or X, y'all go over there, y'all will see the ten-second clip that I put of, of the man who broke it down. I didn't put Kansas' video up. I might string them both together, just give y'all a video, so y'all can see it. Yeah, because I don't know, I just find it interesting. I, I, I find, I like that people are holding these officials accountable. That's the whole thing for me. That's the whole thing for me, they are holding these officials accountable. They coming with their documents, they coming with their records, and they coming with their processors to serve them with their subpoenas, their warrants, or whatever they gotta be served with. Okay, child, to say, we ain't playing. We ain't playing with you. We taking back our community. The citizens are tired of being used and abused, and this is how we gonna show and prove that we mean business. You going to jail. I was like, okay now, okay now. Um, Roe v. Wade, you know, that was overturned in June of twenty twenty-two, causing a lot of friction within society. That's the best way I can say it. Um, it seemed that the anti-abortion folks had got the upper hand as far as deciding what women can do with their own reproductive parts of their body, you know, stripping them of their reproductive rights. Okay, y'all wanna sit there and the light been red, I mean, green, you know, um, there was, there has been seven states that have had abortion rights on their, um, ballots since last June, and each of those seven states has successfully, has successfully implemented abortion rights contradictory to the anti-abortion ban that had been placed after Roe v. Wade was overturned. Um, I'm gonna look into it more deeply, because there's something happening in Ohio that I didn't really dive into, but there was a major win in Ohio as well. It wasn't on the ballot there, but there was a major win in Ohio in regards to abortion rights for women. So, people are still fighting. They still fighting back, you know, we not finna let this be no handmade tale situation going on, is what they saying. We gonna fight for our rights. Um, so, I'm very happy and elated to see that. I know, I, it was a lot of people my age were saying that they really didn't care, because it doesn't affect them. It, 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 it does, it does affect you. It may not affect you reproductive-wise, because you ain't no longer having kids no more, or your kids probably ain't gonna have kids no more, what have you. It, it, you know, it's been, it affects you, because it's, it's, it was just a first step in them taking over other rights and overturning other laws that have been passed to help, to help progress us as a people society. So, it does affect you. Um, we'll see. Okay, the rest of this whole, all this paper, the rest of this, I don't got to do with Donald Trump, y'all. Except for Sister Wives, it's coming back on August twentieth, y'all wanna see that? Sister Wives, I thought that show was cancer, child. And it's not called Seeking Sister Wives, it's just Sister Wives, so I'm not sure which one this is. Because I know there was multiple versions. There was one where there was a one guy that had four wives, and that the whole show was about him and their family. Was that Sister Wives? And then there was Seeking Sister Wives, where they had different couples who was going out trying to hook up with different people. I don't know which one is which, but there's a new season of Sister Wives coming on August twentieth, if y'all wanna see that. Um, speaking of TV shows, with all the doggone strikes, uh, that's going on with the writer's strike, the WGA, and the actors' strike with the S, S, S A G, um, a lot of people are on reruns now, man. We are binge-watching shows that's been out forever, forever, ever. I think Suits is like one of the number one shows right now on Netflix. I love me some suits. When I started watching, I started watching, I think last year, but I started watching it when it was on Amazon Prime. It's no longer on Amazon, it moved it over to Netflix. Okay, anyhow, the writers, um, have entered into negotiations again to try to get their pay supplemented and all the things that they have been asking for. However, the SAG, SAG-AFTRA, they failed to go back into renegotiations. Um, some, you know, they have linked both of these organizations together, because they've joined each other on the picking line. So, I wonder how this is going to be, how this is gonna play out. If indeed, the writers do renegotiate contracts with, to allow them to go back to work. Are they gonna go back to work, being that the Actors Guild is now also on strike? You know, they were calling for the actors to support them, and a lot of actors did join their strike. So, if they get, you know, the negotiations done where they are benefiting, are they gonna actually go back to work, since the SAG is still striking? Um, what else is going on, child, in as far as, as far as TV shows? Well, this ain't a TV show, but this is a damn show. Okay, see, I remember when Kiki Palmer did her little, uh, uh, visit to Usher concert up in Vegas, right, and she did her little, you know, praise dance in front of him with the little see-through dress on, and the boyfriend got mad, right? Okay, Kiki has been dragging this shit out, baby, for her benefit. You know, she already got t-shirts that says, "I'm a mother," or, you know, stuff like that. She got merch in regards to this situation. Her and Usher just released a video together. Usher got a song called "Boyfriend", and Kiki is one of the main stars in the show. I think she start off as herself in the video, and then she becomes Usher, which I, I saw on one of her posts, she said, you know, when she used to watch these videos growing up, she never wanted to be the dancers, or the women that he was singing to, she always wanted to portray him. So, she gets to know dancing in the video, she's doing a lot of moves that Usher would have done, then, uh, then they dance together. I haven't listened to the song, um, but it's called "Boyfriend", and the video was dropped the other day. And at the end of the video, Kiki Palmer is throwing serious shade back at Darius again, because she was saying, you know, I think she took a little phone call at the end, it was like, ooh, I'm tired. You know, I can't get up and do such, such, or whatever, or, you know, I'm pooped, you know, I am a mother after all, you know. And then she went and get the camera, right. So, she's still throwing shade at Darius, which a lot of people are like praising her for doing this, they still dog him about the fact he didn't have a job. Darius had work. No, he ain't got no nine to five like you do, but Darius had work. Um, he does wanna get more into acting, but Darius has always had work, and he had a, he had a, a football career as well, so, anyhow. But, what I see, the fact that, um, she's continuously making videos and posts about it, and statements about it, and incorporating it into her brand, yeah, she's getting her bag off of it, but the fact that he's not really saying anything, other than he supposedly has moved on himself, the, the fact that she's still, um, capitalizing off of it, tells me more about how she really feel. It ain't like she, to me, this ain't a, it's funny to see, it's cute to see. I like the stuff that's coming out of it, you know what I'm saying? But it seems like she bitter, she hurt. She's not really bitter, but she's really hurt, and she's trying to put on this big front. If she wasn't as hurt as I believe she is, she wouldn't be talking so loud, as she doing, in regards to this situation. And she's trying to make herself feel better. That's what I see. That's what I see. Um, he said what he said, she said what she said. Actually, she really is saying shit, for real. She really didn't even respond to him, but she's dropping project after project, that's like digging at him and digging at him and digging at him and digging at him, and because we as a people are messy. We like messy situations. She capitalizing off of it. But, however, I still think it's a front emotionally, like she's trying to build up this image like she really don't give a fuck, that she really do. That's all I'm really saying. She really do. Hell, as far as that baby is concerned, oh, they really ain't said much about, you know, his interaction with the baby. Now, y'all know, like, Kiki Palmer had PCOS, right? So, she had problems, she didn't think she was gonna ever have a baby, so Leo is a little miracle for her, you know what I'm saying? She loved that baby damn, but, and I knew just from, well, not, I didn't know, but just from photos, he seemed to love that baby just as much as she did, so, but we don't see anything these days with him and the baby anymore. I hate to think that Darius is dead, be dead, I hate to think that. He got some, I think he had to have some kind of involvement with the child, I hope, which means that she's still interacting with him in some kind of way, same kind of form or fashion. Um, because, yeah, she ain't put out nothing to say he dead be dead. It, it, it's everything that she's basically saying is, how dare you speak ill of me? Okay, that's basically what she's saying. Okay, so, oh, new travel regulations. I'm a traveler, or I used to be, but I'm trying to get back into traveling again, y'all know, I plan on going to Greece, I plan on going to Spain, I plan on going to Italy in upcoming years. I plan on going to Italy next year, okay? Well, there's a new travel regulation that's out there set forth by the European countries, establishments. So, there's basically sixty countries that currently do not require you to have a visa to enter into Europe. Okay, um, starting in twenty twenty-four, there's gonna be new guidelines specifically for the Shingen states. I think that's how you pronounce it. The Shingen area, the Shingen countries. All the countries that fall under this, where you're gonna have to do a separate registration. This is not a visa. This is a system that they call the European, I'm trying to read and drive, say, European Travel Information Authorization System. This will be an online registration that you would do as a person who is from a country that doesn't require a visa that you must do now in order to enter into these specific countries. Again, they don't have the same regulations as getting the visa, because it's not an actual visa. And while I keep stressing that point, because a lot of people are going around on social media saying, oh, you're gonna have to have a visa now to go into the UK. First of all, the UK is not even on this list. Let me tell you the list of the countries that you're gonna need to do this registration for. I'm gonna have to register, okay? Italy, Iceland, Hungary, Belgium, Spain, Lithuania, Luxembourg, Poland, Latvia, uh, Liechtenstein, Germany, Austria, the Netherlands, Finland, Sweden, Switzerland, Norway, Denmark, and France, okay? These are all the countries that fall under the Shingen, I think that's how you pronounce it. S-H-E-N-G-E-N, I think that's what it was. It falls underneath that umbrella. So, you, if you're gonna plan to travel to these countries in twenty twenty-four or later, you're gonna have to register in this system if your country does not require you to have a visa to travel to Europe. Like I said, I'm from the US, I live in the US, for those of you who watch me from other countries that didn't know, we don't need a visa to go to Europe. Um, but if I wanna go to any of those countries I just listed, I'm gonna need to register into that system. If you're just trying to go to the UK, you don't need to register into that system, okay? But those other places, like I said, Italy is on my list. If you're just trying to go to Greece and Santorini, because I see everybody at mama going to Santorini right now, you don't need to register, because Greece is not on this list. It seems like these are a lot of the countries that are affiliated, um, they have a common, common affiliation when I was looking at the names of them, but anyhow. Um, there's another little random ass shit. Barnes &amp; Noble, if you a book reader, Barnes &amp; Noble got fifty percent off all their hardcover books, all the way up until September fourth. So, if you a book reader like me, there you go, get you some little books. If you got too many, you, if, you can't even have too many books, unless you're trying to move it. You got too many fucking books, trying to move out of God doggone books everywhere. Anywho, and that's going on with Donald J. Trump. Okay, so, in my last video, I mentioned that Fonny Willis has indicted nineteen folks um, in regards to trying to overturn or to, um, I keep calling it an overturn, overturn the election in twenty twenty. And so, that's my terminology, that ain't the legal terminology, but that's what I'm saying, overturning. They're being charged under the RICO Act. I did state, if I believe the RICO Act in Georgia requires that they do have a jail time, they cannot get probation in Georgia. Each state has different regulations for the RICO Act. Like I said, I told you before, the RICO Act normally is affiliated with mafia or gang organizations, or crime, like that. But it's any organization that are doing criminal activity to achieve a particular goal, which is why she's putting them under the RICO Act. Um, I also stated that they had to twelve noon Friday to turn themselves in. That was incorrect. They happened to twelve noon Friday, the twenty-fifth, to turn themselves in. But arrest warrants have been issued. Um, they will get mug shots, I know a lot of y'all gonna be happy to see they get the mug shots. They supposed to get mug shots, and as of right now, this trial can be televised. I have not seen anything that says it will be televised, but it can be televised. I'm just looking at the fact there's nineteen defendants. They gonna have to build a bench for all nineteen of them to be there in court at the same time? Nineteen people being tried at the same time? Um, but I do believe that there was one person that's trying to get his case separated. I'm gonna have to come back to that, because I don't remember, but I thought that that's what, that was gonna happen. Because if you are connected to him, and you believe that he is going down, you don't wanna be tried with him, you wanna try to keep yours separate. Um, but okay, so, next Friday, they got to twelve noon to turn themselves in. And they'll tie up, wrap up shit that you got going on in life, and turn yourselves in, that's what she's saying. Um, so, she has requested, well, in the state of Georgia, I think I told y'all this too, they have six months to do, to put, go to trial. That's their normal procedure. Within six months, they go to trial, okay? So, I had guesstimated that to be in around February. However, being that they're not gonna be arraigned until September fifth, which we, are they gonna sit in jail that whole time? I hope they sit in jail that whole time. They not gonna be arraigned until September fifth. Arraignment is when they come in and say whether they pleading guilty or not. They not gonna do that until September fifth. So, six months from September fifth is March fourth, which is the proposed date that Fonny Willis has, uh, requested for the trial to happen. Now, this date does overlap some, uh, cases that Donald Trump is already involved in. So, I'mma try to break this down to y'all, y'all. There are six different cases that Donald Trump is going to court with within a six, with, with, by, uh, not six months, by next summer, six cases, y'all. And y'all like, what the fuck is the six? Four criminal cases and two civil cases. So, Jack Smith, what I, like I say, I like to call a lecturing tampering or overturning election. His case against Donald J. Trump is proposed to go to court on January second. It has not been set in stone yet, but this is the date he chose, so it'll be the day after New Year's. Jack Smith is saying, let's start the new year off right, okay? Um, Judge Chutnik, who one is presiding over the case, baby, they done already threatened her life. They done already threatened her life, on top of a lot of, you see GOPers and Trump supporters out there with their, you know, thug thumbing on the internet, saying what they would, should, couldn't do. But, yeah. She, 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 she ain't wavering though. She not wavering. I noticed that a lot of the judges that are presiding over these cases are all women. It's not interesting. Hmm. Okay, so anyway, January second is what, uh, Jack Smith is proposing for the election tampering situation, okay? And then we got January fifteenth. Remember E. Jean Carroll? The one that won her five million dollar sexual battery and assault case with Donald J. Trump? As far as I know, he still ain't paid that money. You know, after the case ended, as Trump always does, he go to flapping his motherfucking gums and everything like that, right? Well, he flapped him one time too many, E. Jean Carroll took him back to court. There's a second defamation case against him that's gonna go to trial, January fifteenth. That's, you know, just a few days, two weeks after Jack Smith only is to go to trial, right? This time, she is seeking ten million dollars. Yes, ma'am, ten million dollars, okay? And then, so, if Fonny Willis gets hers accepted, March fourth is when her case will go to trial. So, he's got the Jack Smith, January second. He's got the E. Jean Carroll case, January fifteenth. Then he got the Fonny Willis election case, March fourth, all right? And then Allen Bragg. Remember I told y'all Allen Bragg was one of the people that he was targeting in his campaign ad? Also, Allen Bragg was one of the men, that, that guy in Utah who was threatening, uh, Joe Biden. He was also threatening him as well. Allen Bragg is the one who is presiding, uh, who was prosecuting his, uh, hush money trial, his business fraud up in New York. There's thirty-four counts, there, y'all. Thirty-four counts. That trial goes to, uh, court March twenty-fifth. So, we got January second, we got June, January fifteenth, we got March fourth, and now we got March twenty-fifth, okay? Then we also have Jack Smith coming in with his documents case in Mar-a-Lago. Now, the third defendant, Carlos de Oliveira, he just pleaded not guilty, of course he would, and he just pleaded not guilty in, in, in regards to that case. But that case is set for May twentieth, because, you know, Eileen decided that she figured Trump wanted to do after the election, Jack Smith wanted to do within sixty days, so she decided ten months made sense to her. We not really hearing too much on that case, because the election case is really overshadowing it right now, but baby, it's still going on. But, but the fact that she was able to put that case on May twentieth for the trial date, that allowed Jack Smith some time to really dig in his ass on the fucking election, uh, overturning the election case. So, we got May twentieth for that date. Okay, so that's January second, January fifteenth, uh, March fourth, March twenty-fifth, and now May twentieth, okay? There's five cases right there, right? So, his last civil case, is this New York as well? Um, did I read that wrong? He got another civil trial coming up, y'all. What the hell is this one about? Oh, Trump and his sons for more business dealings. Um, fraudulent business deals and building trans, uh, business transactions. That case goes up October second. So, next year, you're gonna be full, okay? Um, on top of the fact, there is rumors out there that, um, Melania Trump is filing for divorce proceedings, and that she is requesting that all these criminal cases and civil cases that he have be postponed until after the divorce case is finalized. As far as I know, Melania is still living down in Mar-a-Lago. As far as I know, Melania is still living down in Mar-a-Lago, living the best life she can live with dumb Donald, cuz that's his, still his home as well. Um, so I haven't found anything else to, I tried to search court records to see if there was a uh divorce proceedings file. I haven't seen anything to verify it, so it is still just a rumor that she is filing for divorce. Um, there was a, a post or interview that was made that she mentioned all of his criminal actions and, you know, and saying something along lines, how could you stay married to a person like that? Baby, you been married to a person like that. I, for some, look her, if it's up to me, I would go after her ass too. Cuz trust me, she got very much knowledge about all this shit that's been going on and she been benefiting from it. That's what I feel about it. So, again, I don't know if the divorce thing is, is legit, but woo, it's a lot of stuff going on with Donald J and like he's still off on social media, off on Truth Social, popping off. I still don't know why the judge ain't held him, Putnik ain't held him in contempt of court, being that you got a restraining order telling him to shut the fuck up. But a lot of these dates are like significant, but one, the arraignment date uh for the Fonny Willis case of September fifth, that's the day before Labor Day? And he's at Fulton County Jail, that's where they, well, Fulton County is the area that they supposed to be locking him up for. And Fulton County kinda works like St. Louis, if you get arraigned and you get arrested, you gotta be held in the court system. You ain't getting out on no damn holiday, you at least spending the holiday in jail, okay? Like I said, Jack Smith's date, January second, is starting the new year off. After the holiday, everybody partying bullshit, let's kick it off New Year, you know, with this trial, that's what he wanna do. Okay, so the proposed trial date that Fonny Willis is setting for March fourth is the day before Super Tuesday? Super Tuesday is when a lot of these uh states vote in the primaries of who they wanna run for election. As of right now, dumb Donald's still in the fucking lead as far as the primary candidate. The case that she was trying to put forth, saying he had six days to prove whether or not she made these uh those allegations about being involved with a, a, a drug dealer or something like that. I don't think that went anywhere cuz that happened eight days ago, when she said she had six days, she had six days to come back or new charges gonna be filed, and I don't see any new charges being filed in regard, in regards to that case. It's possible that he pulled the ad, that's okay, I, I videotaped it, I got the ad, so y'all can see what the ad was saying. Um. So the May twentieth date that Eileen had is set for the documents trial, she set that after the primary elections were over. Of course, dumb Donald wanted to happen after the election was over, but it's he, it's after the primaries, so he could be already the primary candidate by time that case goes to trial. Um. One of the things that Judge Chutnik did, Judge Chutnik is the one that's presiding over the uh election fraud with, with Jack Smith. One of the things that happened during that trial or the pre-trial hearing, um, Donald Trump was stating that the restraining order was gonna hinder him from campaigning. He is on the campaign trail at law, and if he can't talk about the quote-unquote lies that are being told about him on his campaign trail to um justify why not or why he should be a, a better candidate to his opposition, um, that, that she's restricting his, you know, right of freedom of speech, right? Judge Chutnik told him, being on the campaign trail is a day job. It's not your job, it's something that you choosing to do. It's not a requirement for you to run for president, it's something that you wanna do. So like anybody else with a regular ass day job, if I do a restraining order, limit him for certain actions, they must abide by it and so do you. You are not above the law. And I mean, she didn't make that last statement, that's, but, but that's basically what she's saying. Uh, her words were similar, her words were similar, like you don't get no special privileges, I mean, which, to me, she's still giving him some special privilege because he been violating this restraining order over and over again, and he, he still ain't locked the fuck up. He should be locked the fuck up until trial. But I, like I said, I think because there is not a set trial date as of right now, they're proposing January second. But since there is a set trial date, I figure that's why, because we don't know how long the fuck he would be locked up and that's gonna be a lot of tax dollars spent housing his ass in jail. But my thing is, with all of these cases, he's, he got too much freedom right now. He walking around too free right now, and it, and it is, um, his presence or the fact that he's walking around free right now is allowing his um base to be riled up even more. He's, he's going around still giving hate speeches and overturning the government speeches. He's still going around doing all this stuff and people still, woo, 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 woo. There was one video that they was interviewing some lady talking about, um, there's gonna be all-out civil war if he gets arrested. That just shows me the intelligence level that's a lot of these people are on. A- and they are choosing not to see the the wrong in which he's done. And they have told themselves so many times, so much, that he's right, that they starting to believe it themselves. That's all I gotta say about that thing. Um, so, yeah, that's it, y'all, I'm about to pull up to work. It's been PNTV. Thank y'all for watching, thank y'all for always being there for me. Like I said, I probably go, I might piece together those two videos from the Prairie, Texas, uh, City Council meeting, if y'all wanna see him, and I can post them up here cuz a lot of y'all don't follow me on IG. And anything else that y'all want me to talk about, let me know, and I will see you in the next video.